Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education meeting for September 13th, 2017. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
If it has.
Thank you, and would you please call the roll?
Carolyn.
Here.
Eliza.
Here.
Evan.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Olstead.
Here.
Heschel.
Here.
We have a tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight we will be led by three students from Webster Stanley Middle School, Avery Damel, Mia Salvago, and Clara Selzer. Can I come forward, ladies?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is...
Nice to meet you.
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, we do understand.
Can I have another...
Oh, yes.
All right, we'll move next to the superintendent's report.
Well, and I'm going to defer to our two new student representatives who will introduce themselves and tell us about activities relating to the school. I believe that you're all set, and I'm Asher Cassandra, or Samara, who's going first?
I think I'm going first since my PowerPoint's up.
All right.
Hello, everybody, my name is Cassie Lively. I'm the Student Government President for Oshkosh West High School for the 2017 and 2018 school year. A little bit about myself, I'm a four-year varsity swimmer for the Oshkosh West Wildcat Swim Team. I also swim for the Oshkosh YMCA Swim Team. I am a Girl Scout leader for my sister's troops. I was a dare role model this past year. The picture of my vice president and I, Josh Fannin, I'm a part of the Global Academy for Global Studies, and a bunch of other things such as Rotary, the Coles Cabinet, which is our principals group where we meet and we discuss current issues in our school. First thing up on our agenda is Oshkosh West Sports. Our football has been doing really, really good this season. We've won two games, which is really happy, we're really happy about it. We have our homecoming game this Friday, we're playing Kekana, so go Wildcats. Our golf has also been doing really good, they've been doing really good in their meets, and they are almost broke their record from last year. For tennis, they've been doing very good, I believe they are four to one in their conference. Volleyball, they've been doing really good, working really hard, they have not won a game, I believe, yet, except in their tournaments, have not won a conference game, but they're still working hard and putting a ton of effort in. For swimming, swimming has just started up. We had terror relays last Friday, we placed sixth out of eighth, we had second and third place finishes. We also just had our last meet last night at Fond du Lac, and we won 96 to 89. That was really exciting. Another thing on our agenda is we have our National Merit Scholar semifinalist, Carly Coons, she's an amazing student and amazing person, and we are so proud of her. We have our homecoming week this week, which is very chaotic, but crazy, but super fun at the same time. Our first activity was Monday night, was hallway decorating from 6:00 to 8:30. The seniors won. Our theme is Harry Potter. So each hallway, each senior class, senior, junior, sophomore, and freshman class had the house. So seniors were Gryffindor, juniors were Slytherin, sophomores were Ravenclaw, and freshmen were Hufflepuff. On the right, we have Muggles Quidditch, which was dodgeball, is during the same time as hallway decorating. As you can see, our administration went head-to-head with students for a fun game. They called themselves the Death Eaters. Homecoming activities continued. A new thing that we added this year is to, we really want to enforce more student participation into homecoming, that's what we really want, especially since it's so early. So we included the Tri-Wizard Tournament. On Monday, we did the Dragon Egg Relay, where students had a spoon and an egg, and they had to do a little activity. Tuesday, we had the Tricycle Relay, which was the broomstick relay, and they did a little tricycle course. And then today was the Wizard Dash, and they dressed up in wizard costumes, ran a little course, and then came back. Each class had four representatives, the winners will be at our pep rally on Friday. For Mad Dragons Practice, that's also known as Powderpuff Football, our girls have been practicing, and our championship games start tomorrow. And last but not least, our Golden Snitch Game, that's Iron Man Volleyball. We switched up the names to go with our Harry Potter theme, and those are still continuing on for the semifinals, which will be tomorrow. The last but not least, our Tape a Teacher fundraiser. We really want to do something to help the hurricane victims in Texas and Florida, so we've been trying to come up with ideas, and we decided to do this really fun thing where you tape a teacher to a wall. So through these next few days, during lunches, we've been going around and collecting money. Students who want their teacher taped on the wall, they'll donate money in their name. So we have Officer Wissing, our liaison officer, Mr. Hartman, which is our track coach, and he runs the Cats program during the summer, and Mr. Unglub, who is the school bank head person, and he also is a business teacher. So Mr. Hartman is winning as of right now. By Friday during lunch, we'll know who gets taped to the wall, and as you can see, there's an example of what might happen during the pep rally. Also, they can donate $1 for one piece of tape. So the goal is to raise a lot of money, so we can donate. And that is all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We just should note the fact that the homecoming football game is at 6 o'clock instead of 7:00.
Yes, 6:00.
6:00.
We also have a tasteful Oshkosh at 5:15. It costs $5 to get in, there's a bunch of different restaurants set up, and you can go in and taste a bunch of food. Our homecoming parade is also at 4:45.
The whole concern is that it's traditionally 7:00, but I noticed that it was...
It's a little bit earlier, because I believe there's a game after us.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie, that'll be a tough act to follow. My name is Samira Berti, and I am 17 years old and a current senior at Oshkosh North High School. I took over as president last spring, and I've been enjoying the responsibility ever since. I am a leader in various clubs, such as our Rotary Club, and our Spartan Support Club, and things of that nature. I won't bore you with all the details, because I'm here to talk about something more important, which is Oshkosh North. And I can do that for a long time, so I better get started. So keeping up with the Spartans, before school started, our student council went right back to work to start welcoming back our staff. And as you can see, we have a couple of our staff members enjoying continental breakfast that we prepared with the help of Verb. And we've been partnering with Verb for a while now, and they've been a great asset to our school. As you can see in the picture next to me, we have Mitchell, and he's become a close friend of mine throughout this past summer. Welcoming back the staff with the breakfast is a great way to kick off the school year and just boost morale. And we thought to continue this type of free food aspect to welcome people back for the first day as well. For the first day, with assistance of Verb and B104, we were able to provide students with free snacks, beverages, and some gifts, as long as music. I could tell that those students really appreciated the free snacks, and it was a great way to calm down first-day jitters. And continuing on, an important thing to talk about, our North Athletics. This fall season, we had a total of 303 athletes go out, which I think is a great number. And we've been doing pretty good so far, especially our North Boys Soccer Team. They had a game last night, and they won, and so kudos to them, and as of right now, I believe they're 4-2. Our swim team has also been doing a phenomenal job. They took fourth place at the Appleton West Terror Relay, as Cassie was talking about, last Friday. Our cross-country team has also just been outstanding. They've been getting medals at every single meet. For example, at the SHANO Meet or Invite last Saturday, our girls' team finished ninth out of 21 teams, and our North Boys finished seventh out of 20 teams. And as you can see in the lower picture, those are some of our outstanding athletes. Currently, our football team is 0-4, but hopefully we'll be able to turn it around sometime soon. Okay, a project that I know that you guys are really familiar with, so I won't bury you with the details, but I just thought I would mention it, because it's something that North students and staff are really excited about. For those of you who may not know, which I doubt, Project Curb is a citywide initiative to beautify Oshkosh area schools. So what we really just wanted to talk about is we need volunteers. So if you're not already signed up to go to school, please sign up to go to North on the OshkoshForEducation.org website, and it's September 23rd, it's a Saturday, correct, from 8:00 to noon. Since school just started, we haven't had the opportunity to get a lot done, but that's not stopping us. We have a lot coming up. Our homecoming week is October 2nd through the 6th. Our homecoming game is against our crosstown rivals, West, but it's a great opportunity for anyone from the Oshkosh community to come and support us, hopefully the Spartans, I hope. The homecoming dance is the 7th of following day, and our theme is Hawaiian, which we're really excited about, because as the days get colder, it's important to remember the warmer ones. Another event that we're excited about is the Spartans Spectacular, which is October 29th. And I'll speak more about that at the next meeting, but it's important to remember that this great event, as it helps youth have fun and just get some free candy, which is always great. And then following that, we have the Fall Play, which I'll talk about in a future meeting. All right, well, thank you for listening, and I hope you stay tuned for more Spartan updates.
Thank you very much, Samara.
Thank you.
Very good.
Outstanding job, and for a first time through, you did really well. It's a great game. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the superintendent's report. There's no board president's report this evening.
This evening, when this week, the superintendent's report, we have a number of school issues, and then an exciting event taking place throughout our elementary schools, and Dr. Gunlock will come up and share about the excitement of 3rd through 5th graders receiving new technology. This evening, Oakland, and to share with you, Oakland Elementary students and staff wish to thank the staff and patients at Fletcher Chiropractic for their generous donation of school supplies, which will help ensure that students that have items that they need for a successful school year. Picture here also are the excited Jefferson Elementary School staff students, and as they started their first day of a new school year on September 5th, and welcome back to all at Jefferson. South Park Middle School students and staff kicked off the first day of school learning with the Panther Way, the Positive Behavior Intervention, and support of PBIS through their team-building activities. Parker the Panther, Jimmy John staff, and the school staff threw incentives to students in the audience, what a fun way to start the year. And it should be noted that I think a number of us at the table, plus several of our district administrators, were also present to enjoy that afternoon at South Park. South Park students also watched the movie McFarland USA, which promotes being culturally responsive. They learned about creating a responsible, safe, and respectful school, family through perseverance, cultural diversity, teamwork, and inclusiveness. As a part of the PBIS system, Merrill Middle School students learned about express behaviors at school, including which side of the hall to use when changing classes, what voice levels to use for each assembly of students, and how to be classroom-ready. Congratulations to Merrill Elementary and Merrill Middle School for being one of four schools recognized in the state by the Mimic Foundation in their needy schools project. The $6,500 grant provides school supplies for students to aid them in being successful. The school was awarded during an all-school assembly last Friday afternoon, September 8th. A special thank you to John Sugler and Susan Skolkulitz of Sugler Insurance. And congratulations to Oshkosh West High School senior Carly Coons, and our student representative from West already told you about her success and the celebration of strong academics. And listed here are a whole list of superintendent's activities compared to the list when summer was going on. This list is getting much longer for superintendent's activities for the past week. And I'm going to call on Dr. Gunlock to just share briefly with you the excitement that our 3rd through 5th graders have relating to learning without limits. Remember, this is the fourth year of beginning the year with excitement. Four years ago, we had all staff getting technology. Three years ago, all high school students. Last year, all middle school students. And this year, Dave is part of an exciting activity with elementary.
Yeah, this has been an awesome week, probably one of the best weeks I've had in a long time. And it's not that high school kids aren't excited about new technology and middle school kids aren't, but they're too cool to be excited. So it's been kind of fun to be out, we've rolled out 10 of our 14 elementary schools, they've gone very, very well. But I thought I'd share with you just a little bit of information on how that's gone. I think it's really important, because these things don't just happen. The strength of our district is in our linkage to our community. And we all know that Oshkosh for Education, our community and the district came together to come up with what priorities we had as a community, and those priorities were turned into a strategic plan. And strategic plans aren't always the most exciting thing, they're rarely the exciting thing, but they do give us some results. So what I thought it would be wise to do, does anybody even know what that picture is?
Suit up, Sandra.
HTL's time machine.
Thank you. I was hoping somebody would have that, because I showed that to some people today, and they had no clue, so I had to bring a more contemporary reference. So I figure everybody knew that was a time machine. So what I want to do is kind of just go a little bit back in time and realize that this board and this community asked a couple of questions back, you know, around 2012, 2013, 2014, and it was what if? If you remember, we were in fiscal distress, we had just had one victory, Oakland, and we were feeling pretty good about that. But we started asking some questions about what if we could do a couple of things. Number one, what if we could have equity of instructional resources across the district? What if our elementary, our middle, and our high school students could all have some sort of access to technology to be able to alter their learning activities? That was kind of a pie-in-the-sky goal. What if it didn't matter if you were on the east side or the west side of Oshkosh? You know, I remember, I think it was right after Dr. Herzog got on the board, and she told the story of the Brat Fry at Festival, where they were raising money for iPads, and why do they have to do that? And it was a great question, because we weren't very equitable in terms of technology access. So that was a big goal of the school board, and I can tell you with great confidence that we are equitable. We have one of the largest, most expansive one-to-one programs of any school district, and it's mainly through the hard work of our teachers that we've been able to carry that off. The second one was what if we could actually talk about personalized learning, pitching it where the kids can hit it? And if a student is ready to move on, put in systems where they can go ahead and move on. And that also required and needed us to leverage some of that technology access. So those were two very large goals that we were talking about and required a lot of work on the part of a lot of people in order to carry that off. And we're here today to say, well, we've done that, we've put in the final pieces. But a picture is worth a thousand words. So what we've been doing is I've been taking some pictures as I've been going around, and more importantly, we've been capturing some direct quotes from some of our kids who are out in the buildings. Now, you're going to see some pictures of some students, the quotes don't always line up exactly with the student, but I wanted you to see both pictures and students. Now, this is probably one of my favorites. These are all unsolicited photos, and we've been trying to snap them as we've seen them. But if you've ever seen elementary school students, you would swear it is Christmas. And they are treating these, you have to pry them out of their hands. So the first quote was, can we really touch them now? That was one of the students, because they've been waiting for this for a long time, and the cart's been sitting in their room for almost a week, and they haven't been able to even look in it, really, so it's...
They were all charged up.
They were all charged up and ready to go. Here's another picture of a couple of our students. I want to open it so badly, but I can tell you, I've watched all of our students, they have followed directions to a T. It was fun watching the high schoolers get it, where the teachers are like, here, here's your Chromebooks, and the kids took it and they ran with it. And then middle school, they got far more prescriptive about, here's what you're going to do with it and what you're not going to do with it. In elementary, it is by, you know, step-by-step, so that's been pretty fun to see. Here's a picture from Shapiro when they did their rollout. This was one of the students actually in that classroom who was heard to say, I have a Google account? Yes, you have a Google account, so they were pretty excited about that. Here's students giving a thumbs up at Oak Lawn. Don't get poison ivy on your Chromebook. I have no idea what that's in reference to, but the students knew what that was in reference to, and it seemed like a pretty good idea to the kids who were in the classroom. They thought that was pretty wise, so no poison ivy on the Chromebook. This was at Smith, I believe. My fingers are tingling just touching the keyboard. That was a good one.
Or that could be a short.
It could be, it could be, but I think they're okay. This is a picture from Reed. If there's a fire, should we grab our Chromebooks? No, you should not grab your Chromebook, get out to the building and be safe, and we took care of that right away. Here's another couple of students. I just want to open it, but I know we can't, you know, so that was, and they got to open it, and a couple of minutes later, and were able to log in. But probably the best picture, I like this picture for a couple of reasons, and the quote is not attributed to anybody in the picture, but that's actually Matt Schmidt, one of our Technology Services staff members, working with the students. And I think that this rollout has almost been more fun for them than it has been for me, because they've gotten to see some of that excitement themselves, and all the work they've put in over the past several months getting ready for this. To see a student be that excited for something like that, they went home very happy this week, but probably the one that struck me the most was this one. We had a student who came in and said, I've never used a computer before. And that's what we were talking about, that first priority, that goal around equity. We have students who do not have access. They can't even participate in the educational system the same way that other students could, until now. So just so you know, it's gone very, very well. We have four more schools to go, the kids have been amazing, the teachers have been awesome. It's been fun to see, so just wanted to show you that and give you a little bit of an update.
One of the joys of opening each of these last four years is the excitement at each level, and it makes all those public presentations and referendums be worthwhile.
Very much so, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That completes the superintendent's report for this evening.
All right, thank you. Are there other reports this evening from committee chairs?
I have one from the Education Committee.
Okay, great.
It's not as good as Dave's. I have to go after Dave. The Education Committee met on Thursday, September 7th, at 8:30 in the morning. Our meeting began with an introduction from Dr. Brown, Kim Brown, providing an overview of the OASD Foundation, including some of the events, scholarships, and opportunities. We talked about the importance of engaging retirees and alumni into the education foundation. Cheryl Fowler from the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation also provided information about the educational foundation, including its funds and its distribution. Julie Conrad gave us an introduction into the Integrated School-to-Work Program for 2018-19 school year. She talked to the committee about a planning grant of $25,000 awarded at the start of an Integrated School-to-Work Program. This program, which is anticipated to begin in the fall of 2018, will help to fulfill a need the district has for students who currently do not have post-secondary plans in their futures, i.e. the students that do not have a direct plan for further education after high school. Currently, the OASD has 311 students who had not enrolled in post-high school programs for the class of 2016. The OASD is working closely with the Oshkosh Corporation on a number of programs that will help prepare students for life after graduation. The programs we are exploring would have students in traditional coursework for freshman and sophomore years, while in the junior and senior years, the student would be on location at an Oshkosh Corporation-hosted education center, engaging in coursework, and then working the remainder of the day. Everything the student would be doing would be applicable to what they are doing in the real world. This program plan would allow the students the opportunity to still be engaged in high school events, sports, and other traditional high school activities. A draft of the program was provided for the group, showing a breakdown of how students would receive credits, and it's an incredible opportunity for our students. Nicole Peterson provided an overview of the course sequencing and what partnerships would look like. The district is currently working with Fox Valley Technical College to sort out details such as how the Fox Valley Technical credits will be delivered with an alternative education teacher, and what certifications students leave after instruction, which could possibly be dual credits. Our meeting concluded at 9:32 a.m., and our next meeting is October 12th.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Carl.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Yes, I have a report on the Selden Committee meeting of the Energy Committee, which met this past Monday. The first thing on item was, or the agenda was, changes in the committee, because our community member, Samara, has decided to step down. And we, of course, thank her for her time that she put in on that committee, but we were questioning, we had some questions about what happens now, if the committee is required to be co-led by a community parent, and we looked up in the policies, which, that little thing on the website works perfectly, just put in Energy Committee, yep, and it comes up. But it states, the membership shall consist of up to three board members as appointed by the board president, as well as members of the community and superintendent and district Since the committee is based on community participation, chairperson of this committee may be chosen from any of the above-mentioned membership groups. So it wasn't necessary to be a co-chair, but we are looking at other people to take her place, and we'll probably have more information when we meet again. Third item was the website Energy Link update. Fox reported that there is data through June. It was interesting seeing how Tipler and Reed's electrical bills are going to look since both received mechanical upgrades this summer. The district will start to turn on the heat in mid-October, early November, depending on weather. And they wanted to update the staff that if they open windows because they think their room is too warm, that's just going to make it warmer, because of how our system works. It's hard to get through, because even in my mind, that doesn't make sense, but if your room is hot, you don't open up the window, you shut the door. Because usually you have cold air coming in from the hallway that's blowing on the thermostat, and that's making heat go on, and it's going to be some reeducating of people's normal way of thinking, where if it's hot, don't open the door or window, keep it down. Fourth item was energy education in the buildings, or energy clubs. It was known in the past, there was a large contest with monetary prizes amongst buildings. Going forward, it's not the intent to inundate staff with extra work, especially in the beginning of the school year. At West High, there is an energy group that is student-led. It was suggested to select a couple of buildings that voluntarily went to want to form an energy group. And there is a program that's called Focus on Energy Program, which is a one-year program with a sign-up by September 15th. There are optional sign-up dates on January 15th and May 15th, and there is a monetary payout at the end of the year with prizes along the way. Specific schools will need to be identified. Oakland was suggested because it's a new building, and any change is going to be in behavioral, like the windows. Jefferson would also be an option for elementary. It was noted that behavioral change at the elementary level does not have a significant impact, if looking at impact, perhaps looking at a larger facility like North High School. There are a lot more opportunities in a larger building. It was decided to choose two schools, North and either Jefferson or Oakland, and approached them to see if they wanted to form an energy club. Facilities update, work this past summer is done to Emeline Cook, Tipler, Reed, and West High. West High would be a continuation over two years because of the scope and scale. Tipler was a major project with anticipation of some substantial energy recovery. Reed is closely behind that. A lot of things being replaced are 50 to 60 years old, which with our old schools makes sense. It is a busy and successful summer. And then they're talking about making a presentation of all the energy changes that this district has made, and the savings that we've achieved through those changes at the Waspo presentation, and they are putting together a presentation, they're going to submit it, hopefully, and get approved, and do a presentation on all the good that we've done. Our next meeting date will be January 8th, and one of the cool things we're going to be doing is we're going to take a tour of Tipler to see what they did with their projects over the past summer. And that is it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Evans. Are there any other reports tonight? I believe that the Policy and Governance Committee and Facilities and Finance will be meeting later in September, so we can look forward to those reports at a later date. At this time, we'll move on to our first workshop. We had asked Mr. Kemmer to provide an opportunity... We had asked Mr. Kemmer to provide an opportunity to present in workshop form that which was submitted as a written report. We're always concerned making sure that we address the needs of all of our students, and we felt this report had such importance attached to it, related to addressing the needs of all students, that we wanted to give you a chance to share publicly. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate that. So, as Dr. Herzog said, I'm going to give you an overview of our PK through 12 Alternative and Supportive Education Plan, and what we did in terms of our annual review and revisions this year. So just to give you a little bit of background, our comprehensive plan was created back in 2014, and every year since then, we've updated the plan. And just to give you a visual of what that plan looks like, hopefully this link works here. This is our manual, and I'm not going to go through it in extreme detail. There are some parts I'm going to touch on more than others. Sorry, bring that back up. So as I scroll down, you can see it's 16 pages long. Basically, what the plan does is it outlines how the district supports students who struggle academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. And it also lays out our intervention services, alternative programs, and other instructional supports that are available to all students in the district. One other thing the plan does, and it establishes the criteria that we use as a district to identify our students as at-risk. And as I mentioned, the plan has to be reviewed each year in order to stay in line with Wisconsin State law. So this past February, our team came together to review and update the plan. These are committee members. We had a number of central office staff members participate, as well as principals. We had some people service staff member and then, members, and then some of our alternative education staff members. Here are the sections of our plan laid out. So the plan starts out with an introduction that goes into our district philosophy on alternative education, gets into goals and objectives, laws that are applicable to alternative education programming, how we identify students as at-risk, how we notify parents when we identify their child as being at-risk, and it lays out the programs and services that we offer to our at-risk students, how we monitor the progress of those students once they're identified for programming, and then how we evaluate our overall alternative and supportive plan to make sure that it stays relevant for our students. And then finally, it relates it back to our OASD Alternative Education Policy. So the first part I'm going to touch on are goals and objectives. And as you'll see, our overall goal for the plan aligns with our district goal, and that's to make sure all of our students are college, career, and community-ready upon graduation. Within that, we have four key objectives that we want to shoot toward. The first has to do with graduation rates, and as a district, we're already doing pretty well in that area, and that we're above state averages, but that's one area where we always want to strive to do better. So that's one thing we're looking at. We also want to increase opportunities for our at-risk students, make sure that we have programming and options that align with their needs. We want to focus on early intervention, because we know that the sooner we can identify students and provide them the supports they need, the greater chance there is that they won't be at-risk as they move along in their educational career. And then finally, we want to make sure that parents and students are involved in the process. We want to make sure that they're also participating in identifying what options are going to work best for them. So in terms of our February meeting, the revisions that we made were focused in these areas. So I'm going to touch on our Program of Services matrix here shortly, and that's just a listing of the interventions, supports, programs that we offer as a district. So anytime we have new programs, we want to make sure we add them to our service matrix. We also removed some wording that has to do with reporting our number, at-risk numbers to DPI. That requirement was phased out a number of years ago. The language remained in our report, so we just updated that to stay current. We also added a link to our OASD Mental Health Framework, and that's something, as we continue to develop that framework this year, there'll be more documents that people can link to from that PK through 12 Supportive Education Plan. And then, a couple of years ago, when we updated our policies, we included a PK through 12 Supportive and Alternative Services Program Policy, which is 2211. And we wanted to make sure that we removed the old policy and included the new policy in our plan. So as I mentioned, one of the things that our plan does is it establishes how we identify students as at-risk. And at the PK through 4 level, the state doesn't have any criteria. At 5 through 12, the state has specific criteria that districts are obligated to use. They can add to that criteria, but districts are on their own for establishing that criteria for PK through 4. And like at any other level, we're required to notify parents anytime a student is identified as at-risk, and alert them to the options that are available for their child. So for students in grades PK through 4, we use these three areas to identify students as at-risk. So we look at attendance, behavioral, and social-emotional growth, and then finally, limited growth in the areas of reading and mathematics. In grades 5 through 8, we use the State of Wisconsin criteria. So based on the state criteria, students have to be identified in two or more of the following areas. So they have to be two or more years behind their peers in basic skill levels, classified as a habitual truant, they have to be a teen parent or pregnant, an adjudicated delinquent, and then they have to be an eighth-grade student who scores basic or below in each area on the state exam, or an eighth-grade student who has failed to be promoted to ninth grade. The criteria for our high school students is almost identical. They do add in one piece, though, in that students have to be one or more years behind their age group in the number of credits that they've attained. So in the Oshkosh Area School District, we use a Response to Intervention Framework at all levels. And the reason that's important is because that framework really lays out the level and intensity of intervention students need. So there may be students who need some lower-level interventions that could take the form of more accommodations or modifications, and we may have students that need more intensive intervention, or alternative programming or instructional practices. And our care teams are really the driving force behind not only identifying students as being in need of support, but also identifying which supports each student needs in order to be successful. And one of the tools that we use as a district to help us with that is our Continuum of Support. So we have a continuum of support in place for literacy and also mathematics, and that just lays out different interventions that we have, based on their level of intensity. So it starts out with, like I mentioned, those low-level interventions, and gradually increases to some of our higher-intensity interventions. And we also provide PBIS, which is kind of like, the PBIS framework is very similar to the Response to Intervention framework, only it focuses on behavior. So again, PBIS incorporates those same tiered or leveled interventions for students in So what I'm pulling up now is a document that we call our Program Enrollment Matrix. And what this does is it lays out the programs, interventions, services that we use as a district to meet student needs. And this matrix is divided into two key areas. The first area is more community-based programming that is provided to our district students. So as I scroll down, you can see different organizations in our community that partner with us to meet the needs of students in many different ways. And then as I scroll down, the second part is more district-based programs. So these are programs initiated by the district. Now, there may be community partners involved with these programs as well, but like I said, the program itself is district-based. So as you can see, it's, the list that we have is quite extensive. And what I'm going to touch on are additions for this past year. As soon as I can exit out of here. So the few programs that we added during this past review cycle are Crossroads Program, which provides services for students who have been expelled by the district, Empower Academy, which is at West High School. This is an alternative program for students in grades 9 and 10 who need alternative instruction. Our Jump Start Program is at both North and West High School now. That's a truancy intervention program, where it's at the beginning of the day, students come into school, there are teachers there that are really good at building relationships that are welcoming for students, and the basis of it is it provides support not only from those teachers, but from their peers, who are also in the Jump Start Program. It's been shown to increase attendance in other districts. Link Crew is a program at North High School, where freshman students have upper-class mentors to help them get adjusted to the high school. And then finally, Whatever It Takes or Wit is our alternative special education program for students in grades K through 8, who have significant behaviors that have contributed to them not being successful in the regular school setting. So next steps, like I mentioned, we review this plan each year. The next review is going to be in spring of 2018. One of the key things that we're going to be discussing at that time is how our process worked for streamlining documentation of notifying parents of their child's at-risk status. One of the things we talked about going into this year was, we wanted to make the process a little softer for parents. So a lot of the parents who have students who are identified at-risk are also being notified that their child is habitual truant, that they're struggling in reading or math, that they may be struggling behaviorally. So the last thing they need on top of that is to receive a letter home saying, "Oh, by the way, your child is at-risk." So in consulting with DPI, one of the things that we're trying to do is fold that into some of the natural contacts that we have with parents. So when we do have a habitual truancy meeting, if we know that this is a child who meets that risk criteria, at the time of that meeting, we can let parents know that, you know, your child is habitually truant, and it's one of the factors that is contributing to them being a student identified as at-risk by our district. And then we can go in, these are some of the programs or services that we can offer and provide to help your child. So it just seems to be, like I said, a much more welcoming and streamlined process. In addition to that, we already have a few programs that we're going to be adding to our Program Support Matrix, including our Rise Up Program, which is a mental health initiative that is primarily at North and West, that incorporates what was our host program, and our wellness screen, and some other pieces. Project Phoenix is a new alternative program at North High School for North High School freshmen, similar to the Empower Academy. And then finally, the Rise Up, Rise Program is a new special ed program at Trager Middle School.
Excuse me, just for a point of clarification, since the names are so similar.
Sure.
What is the difference between the Rise Up Program and the Rise Program?
So I can tell you about the Rise Up Program, and Linda can fill you in on the Rise Program at Trager. Rise Up Program, I know the names are similar, is specifically for mental health services. Right now, the program isn't in place at Trager Middle School, but like I said, it focuses on screening students to identify those students who have mental health needs, and then it streamlines support, in form of clinical therapy for students who want to receive that at school, and that's offered through Cattala Health. There's also an educational component, not only for staff, but for students and parents on mental health issues as well.
So the Rise Program stands for, and we should have spelled it out, Resiliency in Structured Education. So it's for special education students who have very particular or direct instruction, learning kind of needs, and need some social skills instruction in small group, very high-functioning students on the Common Core, that just need a different kind of education, so.
So it's an acronym, then?
Yes. Resiliency, Resiliency in Structured Education.
Thank you.
We need to continue to expand our acronym vocabulary and dictionary.
It's all about the IEPs.
Any other questions, presenters?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. I'm cheering.
Of course.
Important population, populations of students who will be addressed by these programs. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on our agenda is Workshop Item Number Two, Superintendent's Search Process Timeline and Details. Joining us tonight are Dr. Mary Fossbender and Dr. Eric Nimmet of Ray &amp; Associates. So welcome.
Thank you for having us, first of all.
Thank you for coming.
We both enjoyed speaking with several of you today, and I look forward to working with Sheri to set up the other interviews, so we'll be doing that shortly. We wanted to go through our own kind of agenda to kind of do some checking, if you can, Will, with regarding to certain things, and I think Sheri has given you a timeline. Let me see if I can grab mine real quickly. If you don't have one, I can certainly hand you one. It's in a blue color. All right, hang on a second. And maybe some of the administrative ones, if there's any extras. So the timeline-
It has blueprint, but not necessarily blue.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Well, it basically says, "Oshkosh Area School District Superintendent's Search Suggested Timeline." So what we're looking at is, you know, working with you and your calendars to be able to try to firm up some things in order to, you know, have a smooth search. And one of the dates that we can tell you upfront right now is a conflict for Eric and I, and it doesn't necessarily involve the board, because honestly, when we have the stakeholder meetings, it's more effective if you do not attend. People feel much more confident to speak freely if you're not present, so don't take that offensively. It's just true universally across all the searches that we do. So we're looking at checking with your calendar, your school calendar, and seeing if it's feasible to do that on the 27th instead of the 26th.
To do what? Where are we?
So if you're under Stage 2, Item Number 2, so there's a 9:15 date, which is a survey link, and then there's meetings with constituent and stakeholder groups. So that's listed as a 26th. It would work for us better in our schedules if it was the 27th, and we apologize for not catching that when we put this out to you.
And some of it that might come into play is, is Wednesday typically a good day within the community to bring community groups together? For example, I heard, you know, the Foundation, or the Oshkosh for Education, or some of the other groups, stakeholder groups that we might want to meet with. Is there, is Wednesday a fine day, or is there sometimes conflicts in that?
We've forgiven student activities and practices because of religious events on that Wednesday night, but the board regularly meets on Wednesday, so.
Okay. So that would probably work well.
But from a standpoint of activities involved, Wednesdays work fine, except we keep students out of activities after 6:00 p.m.
Okay.
And we would, and depending upon the will of the board in terms of having groups of us to meet with students, we would do that during the school day on that Wednesday.
Yeah, we'd sometimes start even as a breakfast meeting, if that's a group that you feel would have, you know, a number of people that would be interested in attending before work. We're happy to do that. We, as we mentioned when we interviewed with you, we like to also meet with high school students, so we would split up, and one would go to each high school. And usually, we do that in concert with the principal and student council, and have some class leadership reps that would be in attendance, and they pop for pizza and water. And then in the afternoon, right after the school hours, we generally like to meet with staff, because they're more accessible than they would be during the school day. And during the day, leadership groups and government people and so forth. So any and everybody, we can work with you in providing a list, along with some groups that you might acknowledge would be key stakeholders for us to be able to hear from as well. So those would take place pretty much all day that day, and then we would have a session in the evening that would also be a public forum, where we typically, you know, get a number of people that are in attendance as well. But in addition to those groups, and you're sort of inviting people to attend those, maybe they're already a member of some, you know, a representative of the groups that we're, you know, meeting with. The public is open, you know, to come in, either if you have the before-work hours and the after-hours, and anyone can fill the same survey online. So there's participation that can happen in a number of different ways, and I think people value that, so that's important. So moving from there, the next question becomes meeting with the board to finalize the profile, which is in that same segment of Stage 2. You're indicating to us that your board meetings are typically on Wednesdays, and we, I personally would have a conflict with the previous commitment on that Wednesday, which is the 11th, I believe. So would you want us to be here in person, or frequently, we end up sending you the results of the surveys on a fairly massive Excel spreadsheet, and we glean from- And we glean from that the top 10 or 12 responses. And that comes from every single stakeholder group and all the online people. And then they're, they're not weighted differently, like, you know, so that you have a skewed response. It's basically by stakeholder groups. And then we tally those all up. And if you're in concert with that, I have some other samples of what the flyer would look like if you want to jar your memory. But basically, holding one up on one side of the flyer would be those 10 or so stakeholder things that you value. And then we would work with your, your people here on site that do your own district newsletters to get copy of things that you want to highlight as positives that would attract somebody in seeing this brochure. And then on the backside, it might give additional information about your strategic plan. And then it would say how you apply, what the deadlines are, and so forth and so on. So, does that seem like something you would want us to be here for? Or if so, I mean, I think Eric indicated he's available to come, but I just happen to have a conflict that night. Or we can do it by Skype, so.
Plus the pleasure of the board. Any thoughts on that?
I've always kind of liked face-to-face better than the technology.
Okay. All right, well, then if that works for you, then Eric can present that. I can be available by Skype, I just can't be here in person, on the 11th, which would be the same night as your board meeting. That way, you're not being asked to come out another night for a meeting. And we would work together with you to be able to determine where that best fits in the agenda, okay?
So, we're moving that ninth meeting to the 11th?
Yes, so that would become the 11th.
And then the domino effect below, we would be changing those two to the 11th or the 12th then?
Yes.
Uh, yes, yes.
We would make that adjustment.
Yeah, they would be the 12th, basically, two days later.
So, if I can't, so Mary, at that point, then we've gleaned all the information from the, from the board members and from the community and so forth. So, we're really through the first two stages of the profile development and ready to move into the recruiting stage.
Exactly. And so, at that point, we would be sending a notice out to all of our associates across the country. The flyer would become available, it would end up being on our website. And, you know, then we're going to talk a little bit later about where else you might want to advertise that. I think we indicated to you, we get about 4,500 hits a month on our website. And that's totally free, that's part of the process. But there may be other things that you want to do with regard to that. And then these are some key dates, if you would stream down into stage four. So, 11:28 is the date that we've set, and I don't believe that is a Wednesday. Hopefully, it's not. This is a night when we would present the candidates to you that we have selected as the top 10 or 12 candidates. So, you would see all of their written information, in addition to which you would see the results of their video responses to the same sets of questions. And that meeting typically takes about three or four hours. So, it's, it's a long evening. We like to start it at, at your earliest convenience with work. We have obviously an appreciation of that, but you also don't want to be brain-dead by the time you try to be, you know, starting to really look through and glean these things. So, if, if four to five o'clock would work as a start time, that would be optimum. And then we would end up finishing when we finish. So, again, three or four hours later. And what the result of that would be, is that you would complete the force-choice matrix, and you would end up with six or seven candidates that then, if you'll slide down to the week of 12/4, you would bring in for face-to-face interviews. Now, here's the part that you need to work with us on by looking at your calendars. You're going to need, if there are six or seven candidates, you're going to need two different days that you do those interviews. So, you need to see where you have conflicts the week of the 4th of December. And we know December is a busy time, so. And then we need to have consensus that you have two of those days that everyone can participate. Do you happen to know that tonight, Dr. Herzog, or is that something that?
Perhaps, I can speak, excuse me, for Allison Garner, who is not here tonight. She doesn't, she did not indicate, excuse me, any conflicts for the week of December 4.
Okay. Let's do it this way, does anybody have a conflict that week?
No, we have a board meeting on the 6th.
Right, so we would avoid that.
We have an education meeting early in the morning on the 7th.
Okay.
On the books. But that would be able to be, if we need to, we can always move that to.
Mm-hmm. Well, if you do three interviews, usually we allow an hour and 15 minutes to an hour and a half per interview. So, you feas, feasibly, you could start an interview at 4:00 and go to 5:30, have a dinner break for a half an hour, and then you could do two after that.
So, typically, are they during the day or are they evenings also?
Usually, they're late afternoon, because we, again, try to be respectful of all of you who have other lives and jobs. So, we try to slide it as late as possible, but don't get it so late that, you know, it's just really kind of late for you to concentrate.
Sure.
They, they did understand our theme of no good decision made after 9:00 P.M.
There you go.
Being respectful of that.
So, so is it fair to say that I'm hearing you indicate that the Monday, the 4th, and Tuesday, the 5th, you could put on your calendar? Okay, great.
We could, but I really would like to see it. I'm retail, and that's, that's Christmas, that's holiday shopping. So, if we could do it 5:00, possibly 4:00, it's pretty taken away from my, my business quite a bit.
Well, here's another thought, you could, you could split the difference and do 4:30 with the idea in mind that you hope most board members can be here by then and get started. I mean, getting organized, not starting the interviews, you wouldn't miss the interviews. But it, you know, you just have to allow that some people are going to be a hair late occasionally. So, to have that half an hour, shoot for getting here at 4:30, we'll start on the dot at 5:00. Does that work better for you, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, are Monday and Tuesday, the 4th and 5th, then doable for everyone?
Jim could train me and I can fill in for him.
All right, so we're starting at 5:00.
I would not be comfortable starting that until Jim gets here, too.
No, that's my point, we wouldn't start, but we'd get everything in order. People would have their packets. If somebody wanted to start reading something, you could do that, but we wouldn't do anything else. Okay. And then, basically, then we would be here after that last interview, and we would do the matrix with you again. And that would determine who are your finalists. So, then the following week, you would be interviewing finalists. So, there's a couple ways to do this. The most straightforward way would be to say that, for instance, you have three finalists. I told you the pitfall of only having two and one backs out, and now you don't have, you're anointing somebody. You're not selecting somebody. So, we've seen it done lots of ways. Madison did two, you know, that worked. But if you had three, for instance, then you would need to coordinate with us so that respectfully, candidates are not passing like ships in the hallway and it's awkward and so forth. And you have to decide as a board, and you don't have to decide that tonight, if you're going to do one interview each day and you're going to make a day of it. In other words, you do some informal time with the candidate where you tour them. Couple board members volunteer to take them around to not all 22 buildings, but some buildings. And you have an informal lunch with them, and then maybe two other board members pick them up in the afternoon. So, you get a lot of time to hear, you know, whatever. And if they have another person in their life they want to bring, that's fine. If they don't, that's fine, too. And then you would do a formal interview at night. So, that's one approach. The other approach, and I like to do that, and I think your administrative team would like that, is if you, if you set it so maybe you do see some buildings with them, but maybe some of the board members take them. But then, let's say, mid-afternoon, you end up with having some, sort of like a tea and crumpets for your leadership team. So, they get to meet them. They're not voting on a candidate, but they, they're giving you back an impression sheet. It's like a half a page sheet, and the board members get the, pass those around before they have to make any decisions. And they read every person who responded's impressions, first impressions of the candidates. And that usually is like an hour setting. So, if you can coordinate that and they can hang in for three hours, for instance, or however long, 45 minutes or whatever it is, then you could do those, you know, sort of in sequence. And then you'd have to have a holding area for the three candidates while they were waiting for their turn to do the interviews. And the board could start conducting the interviews while the tea and crumpets thing is going on. So, you have to think about which of those you want to do. And all I really need tonight is just for you to agree on, on dates, that you want to do those two things, those two days. Unless you go three days, because you're doing one every day.
Right.
That's, it's, it's a huge commitment, I just want to say that to you upfront. If you do all day, three different candidates, all day, it's a lot. So, you may or may not want to go that route. It works well either way. I mean, it's not like that's better.
So, what was the other option? So, it was each candidate all day for one day? And then what was the timeframe for the other option that you had just given?
Basically, then you would have that same kind of function during the day, early in the day. The board members would do the same thing, two or some buildings, and you would coordinate it so you're not stepping on each candidate.
So, all three would come on the same day?
Same day, yep. And that, and you would have this session for the tea and crumpets staggered in the afternoon while you're already starting the interviews, you know, late afternoon.
We do have a couple of board members who have daytime jobs, so.
Well, and it doesn't work, it doesn't work to do the touring for everybody.
Right.
And some boards I've worked with, maybe only two people do that, or three people do that. Doesn't have to be every board member.
Okay.
Right.
At all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's just anecdotal more information, you know? So, if you have a more flexible schedule and you have the time to do that, and that's something that you think would be valuable to the board and that's your contribution, you know, great. If you don't, no big deal.
And this will be your third time interacting with them in one way or another. The first time will be in a video format, but then there'll, there'll be the first round of interviews and the second round of interviews, so.
But I think that they're ones that are most important, you see them out in the community. For me, that's one of, you know, something that's really important, to see them and interacting with, with the stakeholders directing with children and staff and all of that, I think that's.
And we can either work, you know, directly with Allison, whoever the board's point person is, if that's Barbara. You know, whoever you designate as the point person for us, we can work with, with that person in our office, you know, to help coordinate what that schedule could look like. We can give you a lot of different examples of how it can work. But, you know, more than likely, you would, you would have either two evenings if you think that it's too much to do the finalist on one day. Or you would have them one day, but you'd have to, for Jim's sake, you'd have to start probably a little earlier. Maybe again, 4:30 or 5:00.
Right, my opinion, and I can say this because I will put myself out there, I do have more open schedule. I would be more than willing to spend time with them, whatever time is needed. I would rather have them each individually, instead of trying to get them all here on one day.
I agree.
And I will definitely give my full attention and time to all three of those days then.
I agree, and I will also commit to helping those three days.
The informal part.
The informal part.
Right, yep, the informal part, absolutely.
Other people?
5:00 AM breakfast at Perkins or some other good breakfast establishment.
What do you think?
I have some flexibility, but it's something I'd have to, you know, obviously take back to my, my supervisors first.
Right, well, and it could just be one morning or one afternoon, it doesn't have to be all day.
Yeah.
Depending on how many people you get to say, "I can help."
I think that I can help out one of those days. I think that's doable within, within my schedule, so.
Then what would happen, if you did it over three days, and I'm hearing a lot of nods for the three-day option, then you would do it at a normal evening time and you'd do one interview each night, which might be better for you, Jim, then.
Yeah, do about 5:30 or 6:00.
But we need three days then, that week, so.
And you do have a board meeting on the 6th then? I'm looking at my calendar.
It's the next week.
The 21st.
The 11th, I'm sorry. You're, but you do not have a board meeting that week, right?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Okay, so, do we have any conflicts in Allison's schedule the week of the 11th?
No.
Okay. Do others have conflicts?
I don't know what her day schedule is, I just know she's.
Yeah, but I mean for an evening interview, for instance.
As far as I know, she, she would be available.
So, that would look something like, you know, whatever time you normally are all comfortable starting your meeting, if it was 6:30 or something, and then you would have an interview for probably an hour and 15 minutes. And that would be where we would, we would come then after the third day. We wouldn't come every day, but we would come after the third day. We would do the matrix with you again to make you have a forced choice, who's your top candidate. We would discuss it, and then you would end up determining who that is. So, do we have three days that week? How about 11, 12, 13?
That work for everybody?
Yep.
Yes? Okay.
Okay.
Great. Okay. So, second question was, would the board like to receive your meeting materials, like via email? Or do you want paper copies? Because if you have email, then you're going to save some shipping costs, or we can send you a flash drive the same way. I don't know how you usually disseminate your packets, a lot of boards are.
They're email.
Okay, so email works?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, perfect. So, as far as the profile, we've sort of narrowed that down. And the interview process, we have some people who have volunteered to do the informal part. You'll have to work together with Stan and with Allison, or whoever your point designee is, and probably Sheri, to determine what that, that schedule is going to look like for three days, so.
We'll be able to handle that with Sheri and the board members, Jen's.
I think it makes sense to have Allison as the board president do that, if the rest of you agree to that.
Agreed.
Is it your feeling that because? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Is it your feeling that because you've involved stakeholders early on in the process, then it would just be the board that would be involved in the interviews?
Yes, I think so.
Is that a consensus?
Especially we're on that part of December.
I mean, other than the weigh-in from the administrative team and principals, if you can get all them in here, that's fine, too. The more the merrier. Or they can fill out the impression sheet if you go to their building, you know, so.
Is there, if we do those interviews, those all-day interviews, we can still put in there, I think that I would love to do that impression sheet with those, with the candidates. So, one of our stops can be central office and seeing how many of the team is here to, to talk to them.
Yeah, well, the principals.
Can we work that in?
The principals can set it up so that one of the stops is with their leadership team at the building level.
Okay.
If you want, and they all fill out an impression sheet.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I've seen stacks of many impression sheets, and.
So, we can choose who, like, different groups to do.
That's all part of figuring out the, the schedule. So, yeah, absolutely. Okay, I'm not hearing that you would involve them more, the publics more than that, then, other than the board. I mean, you are elected to hire the superintendent, so.
I'd be curious, Mary, to hear from your, sorry, both of you. Your work with other districts over the years, how, what, is a quick snapshot of random community, community members that might join or a formalized group that would be a parallel to the school, but what have you seen in other?
Well, if you have some kind of a public forum, and, and you don't have it sooner than the finalist, you have less of a risk of losing candidates. Because if, if the odds are pretty good that someone has a, like, say there's three candidates, they have a 33% chance of getting the job, then they're more prone to staying in, in the process as a candidate than they would be if there were six or seven candidates. They don't want, if they're successful where they are, they don't want to ruffle the feathers in their current district with their board unless they're really close to being selected. So, either of those options, where you involve a wider net, other than your administrative team, who you can pretty much count on to be silent about the persons, is going to have some candidates withdraw, because they're not going to want to run that risk if their odds aren't, like, maybe down to two or something like that, you know, 50/50. It, it, it's just, that's how it is, and that's the reality.
Yeah.
Because it, it upsets the hometown team, it just does.
Yeah.
So.
And I think Wisconsin law is pretty specific on that, that once you are declared a finalist, then your name is released to the public.
And they understand that, it's just when you get into that earlier round one and the odds are not great, you know, six or seven, that you, you kind of don't want to go there. So, most districts that we deal with today involve them all the way along in this process we've created and you've, you know, so far gone along with and thought was good. But they don't necessarily have other people involved when it's actually down to the interviews and so forth.
I, I did have one search where, and Steve, in response to your question, they had a, just as we were talking about the administrative team here at doing an impression sheet, they also had a community group that was also present on that day that did an impression sheet also. So, it was just, that was one little.
Madison, Wisconsin, did that. They had a night-evening with-question impression sheet, all that.
I would be amenable to that, but I think the interview should be with the board, as you've stated.
Right.
By law, that is our.
That's your charge.
Responsibility, our charge to.
Yeah, yeah. Well, maybe we can talk about how you and all can work out that schedule. If you want that part of it and you think more about it and you want to, I mean, that's, that's fine, that's great, you know? Where they would have listened to a candidate or met them informally, and then they have the impression sheet they fill out.
Right.
So.
And it depends upon where the candidates come from, what they're used to. Because Wisconsin is much more protective of candidates in Minnesota.
Oh, Michigan, they, from the moment they're a candidate, they're, they're up on the screen and they're, they're being telecast.
The television cameras are in the back of the audience, listening and watching the interviews.
Yeah. Minnesota, too.
This is a much, this is a much better system in the state of Wisconsin.
It favors the candidate more, yeah, for sure. It favors the candidate more, yeah, for sure. So, in terms of the next one, that we, we would want to know who the in-house contact is? Who would you designate? And then a board contact person. So would that be Sherry? As the in-house?
Yeah. Sherry and I would work in partnership to assist you.
Okay, and the board contact would be Allison?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So she's not here to sign.
Yeah, there you go. And. So when we co, when we show you the results and you look at the flyer, then basically, you know, you would sort of finalize that for us to send that out, so that would happen. And is there a contact person for the flyer as well?
You mean developing the flyer?
Working, we, we will form it all out, but you may need to send us some copy, like logos or student-approved photos, that kind of thing.
Do you have a communications person that has to?
Who starts on Tuesday? In the meantime, it's Dr. Brown.
Dr. Brown? All right. That'll get him warmed up right away. Okay, and then there's a sheet in your packet, which is kind of very small print, and it's a list of advertisers. Many, many things are free, so that's the good news. Kind of the middle of the page and even a bit at the bottom is free. The top, which is AASA, American Association of School Administrators, you can see if you ran an ad for their website, it's just under a hundred dollars, ninety-nine. If you list it in their job listing, which is a printed kind of copy, then it's four hundred and ten dollars. Some school districts use AASA, and they use just the, the electronic version on the website, and they save some money that way. So, that's a conversation that, you know, what do you think? That's a national publication. Almost all administrators would belong to that. So, whether they're actively searching, or whether they just peruse it because they have interest in it, they would, they would probably see that.
So it's ninety-nine for the website, but then the print is the four-ten?
Yes.
The, the print lasts for as long as they keep their publication. The website has a, a life.
Probably thirty days, don't you think?
Thirty days, so it's out there longer.
Yeah, on, on the other hand, if you get a publication, you're probably, you know, can you find it on your desk? You know, to be able to look at it again, but maybe so. I mean, I think both of them are fairly effective. All right, well, let's go down and you can hold that thought, okay? The next one is, is actually the biggie in terms of expense, and that's Education Week. That's a very longstanding publication for job listings. And it's three ninety-five if you have it on their website for thirty days. And that's included in our base fee. So that would be no additional charge to you. Most boards will spend the thirty-five ninety-five, and they'll run it three times in print and twice on the website for that price. And then you see the breakdown if you do it differently, slightly differently than that, right below it. But the, the big number that most people go with is the thirty-five ninety-five.
Perhaps we could run through the list and then come back.
Okay, sure.
See where the.
NASB, which is Black Alliance, and ALIS are respectively two fifty and one fifty. One runs thirty days, the next one, six weeks. Then you go down through those, they're no longer available, the next two. And then, the next one, we don't frequently use, but it's a free listing. And then NASS, which is another version of AASA, but it's just superintendents, that's free. Ours is free. The latter's report is free. Wisconsin would be free for school board. Association of School Administrators would be free, but the district would post both of those, and also if you did school business officials. So those three would be on you. And then at the bottom, there's really only two that are still available. One is school personnel administrators, and that's two hundred and fifty, and the, the Broad Center, which prepares superintendents, that they train superintendents.
Would it be acceptable if, since I have several of these publications available in my office, that if board members wanted to peruse those and decide what they wanted to invest?
Yeah, as long as.
We could contact you.
Yeah, as long as we hear back before we, you know, we get to the point where we're advertising.
In fairness, in fairness to board members who have not seen what their ads look like, we can make sure that board members have copies of several of those. Education Week and the AASA publications are classic examples of ones that you could look at.
Yeah, EdWeek and AASA are the two most notable in terms of costing you something.
Right.
Those are the ones that most people go to if, you know, they, they are interested in what's out there for jobs.
Mary, in your professional opinion, do you think that we should advertise more, seeing that we're trying to hire mid-year? Do you think that we have a better chance of getting more candidates that way? Do you think that that should be a factor in?
You mean like a broader net?
Yeah.
That you cast? Well, I don't know of too many that cast it any wider than AASA and EdWeek. Okay. I wouldn't, I.
I, I would say that, like, the EdWeek, it's a weekly that gets on the desk of every administrator and so forth, that, that it'll stand out more because it'll be fewer in number versus in March and April, it's a two pages versus, there'll probably be a page of job listings this time of year. Would you agree, Stan?
Right.
From my experience.
Does that help, answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Well, then talk among yourselves, and you can let us know about that. And in terms of state requirements for this position or board requirements, are you interested in someone who has a doctorate? Preferred, some people foot, put on that? We know what the state requirements are and the licensure, but are there any specific requirements that you, as a board, have that we are unaware of?
I don't think so. Not that we've ever discussed.
Would you want to discuss the idea of an EDD or a PhD preferred and then get back to us, or do you know that answer now?
We could do that. I think the, the two documents you gave me this afternoon to be filled out do address that, so.
Okay, so I, I can put a "to be determined" if you'd like.
Right, when we, when we fill these out, we can find out anonymously how, how we stand on that.
Okay.
Yep, and for the sake of the board members that we haven't been able to meet with yet, I think Sherry put in your packets those surveys, and you can just return them to her. That'll help us, yep.
Right. And then who would our contact person be for sending invoices for payment for the contract, which I gave to Sherry today?
I would take care of signing them off and sending them to.
So send them to you?
Right.
Okay, so that gets us to the, the nitty-gritty that everyone loves always, and that's salary and benefits.
I think we're noticed, excuse me, for executive session.
Well, I wanted to just at least share with you and explain in open session, because you're not going to decide this today, and I, I totally get that, so.
Good enough.
At least I wouldn't, I, I would be surprised, especially with Allison not here either. But what we provided for you were two documents, and they are respectively, the sort of regional document, and it says right on it.
We didn't get them.
You didn't get them? Oh, I thought she gave them out, so sorry. I'll go two different ways. The other one is a national document, and what we do is we, we pick similar-sized school districts to yours, and we, we basically try to do the same number, and we average the salaries. And then, and these are generally posted on the website of the individual district. And then on the final right-hand column, we project it forward at three percent. That's not necessarily what the person's going to get, but that's kind of the average, okay, three percent. Like with CPI and so forth. You know, it's either more or less than that. So you can see the, the regional one, the average is two hundred thousand, six eighty-one. So the bottom right-hand corner. Is everybody following that?
Mm-hmm.
And you can see the individual salaries, you know, from the region. And then if you look at the national one, it's two hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three. This is strictly salary, and that would include if there are things that they receive as a cash bonus for work done. It does not include any insurance or pension. So that's separate.
This is salary.
Yes. They're not, they're not lumped together, if you will. So that's a discussion that you would have, I think collectively. And then, what I can tell you is, and that's kind of important, and I'll, if you have these copies still, or I can leave you others if you would like. But what we say in the flyer is this line basically every time. Find one that I can read here. So, it says that the salary will be in the range of, and then you put a number, X, plus an excellent comprehensive benefits package. And then it goes on to say, "The final salary for the successful candidate will be negotiated and determined based upon proven experience, qualifications, and meeting the board criteria." So say it was two hundred thousand, just like that average was. We would tell candidates, you know, this could be ten or fifteen thousand less or more, depending on what your experience, your qualifications, and the board's requirements were. So you, you have some flex room, but what we have found, if we don't put a mid-range in there, people who are making X don't know if this is even worth their applying for. Because they have no pin, you know, sort of as a placeholder to say yes or no. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
I'm curious, do you also add in the listing some sort of index for cost of living as compared to San Antonio or something? Because I think that economic.
We've never done that, but that's actually a great, that's a great point.
You can have that.
Thank you. It's not even stealing.
And, and, and based on what we've been dealing with, with, dealing with this state CPI index, that three percent is, is high.
Yes, and I, we acknowledge that, I mean, it's just a random.
Right.
We put it in for all of them, but we acknowledge that, that's probably not what you're going to see in, you know, a pay raise.
So in terms of the timeline that we've selected this evening, October eleventh was when we were going to put together the flyer, so the, we would have to have, correct, Mary, some type of number at that time.
Prior to that.
Yes, so.
As you look at your exec session and you want to discuss and so forth, it would have to be determined by that time.
And you could do that on your own, once we have Allison here having an exec session to do it.
Yeah, I think, I think you have all the information you need, and if there's some other kinds of documents that Stan, you want to produce, you mentioned one that came out of Milwaukee or something.
Yeah, the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel a couple of years ago had a comparison that actually was used by a citizen during one of our referendum campaigns.
You just have to be careful that it's always apples and apples, because some of those do include other than just salary.
Benefits or bonuses.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, as long as that's, that's there, then that's fair.
You said, did these include, so you said not benefits, but would these include bonuses and things too?
Yes.
Salary, okay.
So any, any, what we would call compens, salary compensation.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions that you have for either Eric or I? And we, I know we zipped through that, but I want to be respectful.
Yeah, I do have a question. These. You want us to fill these out and give them back to Sherry? Is that what you said?
What are you looking?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Is that a survey here?
Yep.
Was that a survey?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. There actually are two surveys, for those of you who didn't get to meet with us today. And you would fill those out and give them to Sherry, and they have two different focal points. One is qualities of a great leader.
Okay.
And the second one is the state of the state of the district. And it's on a Likert scale, one to five, five being the highest. And all, anybody who comes to our stakeholder meetings will get the opportunity to fill those out.
So does this replace those meetings? I spoke with Sh- Sherry earlier today. I know myself and two other board members would still like face-to-face interviews.
Oh, no, it doesn't replace them at all. No, it's in addition to.
Okay, and do you want to, should we nail down those times, or should we take that up with Sherry on working with you guys for the other board members that want to do your interviews?
Well, we'll work with Sherry on that.
With us?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah. Because we can, we can do that by conference call anytime.
Perfect.
And Sherry was going to work to see if you had another time that one or both of you could come up that could coordinate all the rest of the board members who didn't, weren't able to make it today. So that it could be there, but it, it could be, it could be two other times.
We just always try to think about expense and try to hold that down to a minimum, so. You know, if we can do something by Skype, or we can do it by phone, we're fine. If you want us to be here, we'll, we'll certainly do that, too.
Are you on this, the stage two on September twenty-seventh? Are you?
Yeah, we will be here all day that day.
Maybe we could work something out that day.
That might be.
Oh, you guys are doing all the meetings, you're not going to have time, never mind.
Yeah, that, and we just, it might be more difficult to get all that into the mix.
Yep, got it, okay.
And in addition, I will say is that your input is really important to us shaping some of the questions we may be asking the stakeholders. I think that would be another piece. We'd want to hear from all of you first.
We frame the video questions and also the questions that we do, the initial stakeholder, or the initial interview with the candidates, based on your input, and then also the stakeholder questions. So, we need those in advance, really, if possible.
Steph, did you have something?
I did. I had a question on, so I understand the process of getting the stakeholders involved and getting their feedback and input. And I'm wondering when our community will have an opportunity to interact with potential candidates that you might find.
Well, that's what I think is still being determined, based on what I heard here tonight at least, that, that maybe there would be an opportunity to have some, some community members invited to some type of a forum, and they would come away filling out an impression sheet of their first impressions of the candidates when you get to the finalist.
Okay.
But not prior to that, because, at least I would not recommend it, because, again, candidates are going to shy away if they think their name is going to be out there in public, and they're not really in the mix for being a finalist.
A finalist, okay.
It's just a risk that they don't want to run.
Right, I understand, okay.
I mean, the people that would run that risk are people who've already lost their jobs, and you don't want those people.
Right.
You know, because they're in the one ads, they're looking for a job, and, you know.
Right.
There's probably some reason why they're looking.
I have two questions also. In the list of possible media outlets for placing an ad, what about alumni networks? Is that a significant avenue for finding people? Or do the education publications really handle anybody who would be an alumni? So there's not much point in going after the Harvard Graduate School.
They cast a very wide net, I would say. And they, they have really broad users, you know, volume of, of members that, you know, participate. Subscribers is the word I'm looking for.
And I wonder also if we could briefly revisit that conversation we had earlier today about, I, one for clarity on my part, but maybe for a public discussion would be helpful. Recognition of superintendent license among fifty states, among US territories, like Puerto Rico, and then among other countries. And I, I feel like I've had murky answers for seven years. Maybe there's no easy way to have clarity on that issue, but can you address that in any succinct way that?
Well, do it in a general way, and maybe Eric can do it however he knows, too, but they're all different. There, there is no uniformity in licensure.
Yeah.
So that's the bad news. We get international candidates all the time, and we get a lot of them from places like Dubai. And they have gone to Dubai sort of seeking, you know, it seems like the economy's on the upscale and so forth, and they're Americans in many cases. And now, all of a sudden, for personal or financial or other reasons, they want to come back stateside. So, you know, they're sort of trying to reverse course, if you will. Occasionally, we'll get other countries as well, but, but I would say not real commonly. And when I, if those people have qualifications on paper that look good when I talk to them, I frequently get the impression they're not best practice or current practice because they've been away from our system, and they don't know the rules and regs, which is going to get them to a lot of trouble.
Are there any states to watch out for? Like, that, that license threshold is significantly different, that you'd say avoid Nevada or someplace.
I think maybe different standards, but not in terms of the actual licensure, no. One thing we do check is to make sure that they've graduated from an accredited university where their license is valid. You see that in searches sometimes where the firm hasn't done that, and we have a person, half-time person, that's what they do.
And, and to be clear, an, an exception or some emergency, some provision for, say, a college president with a twenty-year tenure who's been, it's simply a non-starter to have a college president without a superintendent's license serving that role, is that correct?
A few states have, which is, Wisconsin is not among them, have what they call a provisional certificate. And it's good for anywhere from one to two years. Illinois ran into enough problems that they have now, the legislature has now enacted law to eliminate that option.
I just want a clarity on it, so.
So it's not, it's not common, but I don't know state by state how many. Do you know of any others that have a provisional still?
No, none, none that I know of, which doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but none that I know of. I would say that if, whenever we have an out-of-state candidate, one of the things I ask them to do is make sure to confirm with the Department of Public Instruction that their license is going to transfer over. Generally, it does, because they have been certified in another state, but there are some implications with that. I know Stan, you have some other.
Having done that very job for the state of Minnesota for nearly three years, I can tell you that there have been varying attempts at reciprocity, and there are none simple, and every state is an individual review. But the best starting point is to be licensed in another state. And then they will recognize, more than likely recognize that in Wisconsin. But because of the limited staff that Wisconsin has, it sometimes takes three to four months, even when you have been licensed for twenty-five years. As I discovered.
And as I think I mentioned to you, Steve, I mean, Minnesota, I did the St. Paul search, and they require the candidate has to have approved licensure in that state 60 days prior to you interviewing them as a finalist.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, if you haven't started and thought about that way in advance of applying, that is not going to happen.
Yeah.
Because all the states have cut their staff because of funding.
Sure.
So they're like bare bones.
They're not processing very quickly.
Thank you all, again, if you had, any other questions, you can certainly send them to us, and happy to be.
I have, I have one now. This has been weighing on my mind for a while now, but is everybody else nervous about our compressed timeline?
Yes. I was just about to ask that, actually.
Absolutely. What are you thinking? You want it to end, instead of having the interviews and so forth, have it end after Christmas?
I think going into all the holidays we have coming up, I think that's going to be, I think, I think our targeted date of January 1 is going to be a problem. I think if.
Well, we would not make the, if we were going to extend it, we would not make the deadline due till probably January 5th or 6th typically. Because, you know, people are obviously off during the holidays, but then they kind of get back on a schedule, and, yeah, you, you get some people because they're very busy people and very successful that would have more time during a holiday period to apply, no doubt about it. I, I, I wouldn't question that at all. You're right. So, I mean, if that's something you want to do, then we would have to reshuffle all these dates of your availability for round one and round two interviews, and then move it back into, you know, January, make the deadline later, and, and then go from there. But you can also have a search drawn out so long, you know, it's just sort of hanging out there, so.
I, I do want to say, though, that in terms of the normal space between dates, this looks like a fairly typical calendar to what we do in terms of searches, so in terms of that, it's maybe more, I think what you're talking about is the timing.
The season, right?
The calendar itself, right?
The season, the.
Mid-year.
Mid-year.
Mm-hmm. Is there going to be a point at the process where we might say, we're not getting the candidates that we want, we don't have a big pool, is there a point where we might come back and say, okay, it makes sense to, to push it back, or does that happen a lot?
Well, I think, I think in an ideal world, you would want to make that call now, not so much based on your feeling that you're going to get a better response if you wait till after a holiday period because people are busy, and, you know, maybe that's not something that they are able to take the time to get the application. It's a long application, no doubt. So I think you would almost, I mean, we, I couldn't predict otherwise, other than just talking in general terms, I could see where people would maybe have more opportunity. But, you know, Eric is absolutely right, this is a typical schedule, so that would mean you might move it all back a ways.
So if we found somebody, too, that was interested, we are offering them the opportunity that if they didn't want to leave mid-year, that we would consider an interim for.
We're going to have to work together on how we word that so that we don't dissuade candidates from applying.
Okay.
And let them know that there are some options there.
Okay.
What's, what are other board members' feelings about sort of tearing up the schedule and moving it?
I think if we push it back any further, then we definitely are going to have to get an interim. I mean, if we push this at all forward, then we definitely have to get an interim, and then we can just kind of open up the whole schedule. If we keep this schedule, we'll get the, you know, we'll get the candidates, but I want to absolutely for surely put in there somehow what we just discussed and what you brought up, Steph, about, you know, wording it somehow that, you know, not to defect everybody from trying to come apply, that wouldn't be able to start mid-year.
Well, how do you want to leave that? Do you want to give that more consideration, whether you want to move it back? Because I'm hearing both approaches. We haven't heard from Bob, or Barb, or Steve as to what they think.
It's a very compressed schedule, I agree with Jim. I think it's well organized. It's certainly aggressive from a time standpoint. I do also have concerns about, and I have from, since last May, trying to find a replacement by the end of December. As I told Stan earlier tonight, literally, these are large shoes, literally and figuratively, these are large shoes to fill, with no disrespect intended.
They're only 12s.
Okay. I, I did in anticipation of this conversation tonight contact the WASB, Wisconsin Association of School Boards, I do serve on their board, and talked with one of their attorneys. I don't have all the, I don't remember all the specifics, but that was a unanimous vote of the board, and my understanding is that any board member then who voted with the majority could ask that that resolution come back, and the date could be changed.
So that would be formal board action to do so?
Right, we would have to work with Stan on a date if he were willing to extend his time with us, his formal time with us, but we could do it in that fashion. And if we wanted more details, we could contact that attorney with WASB for the guidance on how to do that, so that we're within the legal ramifications.
Well, I mean, both of us will tell you candidly, that will increase your odds.
There's no doubt about that, to not have it be a mid-year person.
And, and Mary, you had asked me about issues of complication with Wisconsin retirement. It's a neutral because I wouldn't apply until, for retirement, until I was absolutely certain that this board had a, a replacement for me. And so that, my life is, and I'm not going to rely upon that income until it comes.
Well, I think that's, I think that's a conversation you need to have then and make a decision if that's what you want to do, and if that's the case, as we said when we interviewed, there are two seasons.
Right.
So there's a season that goes up to the first of the year, and then there's another season that goes after that time, you know, until mid-May or whatever. So, you know, we certainly can change the schedule and flex it, it's, nothing has been sent out yet, so, you know, it's just numbers.
And, and as I've indicated to board members and to, to my executive team, that, and the issue here is caring about the school district, and I will do what is the desire of the board, because I don't want to have the district flounder.
Well, it's a personnel matter, you have closed session tonight, you certainly can hammer that out, and then let us know. Does that seem fair?
That seems.
But I think point's well taken.
Yeah. I'm reading a little bit easier now, even.
There you go. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming and spending time with us today and this evening.
Drive home safe.
Yes. Eric's my pilot till we get to Milwaukee.
I noticed another fellow full旗 driver, so.
Yes.
All right. Again, thank you. We will, we will be in touch.
All right.
There's some decisions made.
Yes, we do. All right. The next item of business on the agenda is the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. The board will consider resolution number one, personnel resolution, A, appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salary schedule. Two, resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed $13,500,000, issuance of tax and revenue anticipation promissory notes, and participation in the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes program. Is there anyone who wanted to remove something from the consent resolution?
I think we should have done that before you read them all.
Oh.
Because you moved now.
We haven't had a motion yet, though.
So moved.
Okay. Oh. I was planning to pull out number two.
Yeah, that's, I think you should have pulled that before you read them all. But she can, no one's seconded the move yet, so she can still request.
I'm going to pull number two.
And then read one and A.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Evans. Personnel resolution, A, appointments, temporary appointments, resignation, and salary schedule.
So moved.
And is there, and moved in seconded, is there any discussion? All right, would you please call the rule?
Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye.
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Omsdod? Omsdod, aye. Heschel? Heschel, aye. Komen? Komen, aye. Motion carried.
All right, resolution number two. Resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed $13,500,000, issuance of tax and revenue anticipation promissory notes, and participation in the PMA levy and aid participation notes program.
So moved.
And is there a second? All right, it's been moved in seconded, is there any discussion? I had actually suggested that this be pulled in order to give Mrs. Schnorr an opportunity to give a brief synopsis of what this vote would entail this evening. Mrs. Schnorr.
Most districts have to short-term borrow, it's a pretty routine thing, and the reason for that is our expenses are pretty much evenly distributed over the 12 months of, of our school year, of our, of our fiscal year, actually, but our revenue is not. For example, 36% of our revenue comes from property taxes. Well, our fiscal year starts July 1st, and we don't get a dime of that property taxes until January, so we go half of our fiscal year without receiving one dime of, of revenue that's 36% of our budget. The other thing is equalization aid, 48% of our budget roughly, is state equalization aid. We get 15% of that in September, and then we don't get another payment of that until December. So you can kind of see why we have a cash flow problem. We have about a $14 million fund balance, which is kind of, it's kind of like our cash reserves, it's the difference between our assets minus our liabilities. If we were not to short-term borrow at all, we would need to increase that fund balance by 13 and a half million dollars. Then we wouldn't have to short-term borrow at all. So that's the reason we have to short-term borrow, is just the difference between the timing of our revenues and the timing of our expenditures. And the district has used fund balance slightly over the last couple of years. You, you had a period there where you were building, building it up, so when you build up fund balance, that means you can, you short-term borrow less. Few years ago, you short-term borrowed as low as 7.3 million, but you have used fund balance over the course of the last couple of years, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, but now your short-term borrowing is up to, we're proposing 13 and a half million for 17, 18, which is what we borrowed in '16, '17.
Thank you, Mrs. Schnorr. Are there any other questions or comments regarding this resolution?
May I add that we're working with legislators and attempting to deal with, trying to eventually get Wisconsin to pay on a more even basis and have better cash flow. It's not there, it's not in this current bill, but those of us who have experienced a more even, even flow of revenue will keep advocating that, yes, Wisconsin could pay and eliminate, pay us based on actual enrollment as opposed to third Friday counts. There is a whole lot of craziness that goes back to the 1940s and 50s that could be improved.
You can choose to get your state aid evenly distributed throughout the fiscal year, but then they take away a portion of your aid because, with the rationale that the state is losing interest on that money.
Cash flow.
Because they're up fronting the cash flow rather than the district. So I think it, it doesn't pay for the district to get that money upfront, but then lose part of it, so we short-term borrow.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schnorr.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I have noted that the resolution runs seven pages.
Yes. I don't think you have to read the whole thing. I think you just have to read that little.
I think we, we, do we need a motion to waive the, the entire reading, and perhaps limit it to the first section on the first page, which begins resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an, in an amount not.
I think we approved the resolution when we read this. When number two.
Well, we pulled it to discuss it, so we haven't.
Yeah, but we would vote on that regardless.
Just vote on that piece? Is that all we have to do?
Yeah, I don't think that we have to read the whole resolution into the record.
There's a motion and a second for number two.
I'm sorry?
There's a motion and a second on the table to vote on number two.
To vote on number two. So does that mean I have to read the whole thing?
If you just read that first title, you're fine.
Okay. I'm happy to do whatever the board wants to do.
I want you to read it all.
I knew you would say that.
I'm just kidding. Everybody can vote me.
I think that's one vote.
But you, you are free to read it all.
Yeah.
All right. Then we'll, then we'll move on here. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed 13 point, 13 and a half million dollars, issuance of tax levy, tax and revenue anticipation promissory notes, and participation in the PMA levy and, excuse me, PMA levy and aid anticipation notes program, as filed with the Secretary of the Board of Education. So, oops.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, we have that motion. We have a motion.
Oh, we did, okay, then call the roll, I'm sorry. We got a little off here tonight.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Omsdod?
Aye.
Omsdod, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Heschel, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Motion carried.
Great, I'm glad I have you all looking out for me tonight in substitution for Mrs. Garner, it's much appreciated.
You did great.
Thank you. All right, are there any requests for future agenda items? I would suggest one, and that would be to move the budget meeting from September 27th to October 11th. The state legislature, as we know, has not yet passed the state budget, and our budget picture should be clearer at that time than it would be on September 27th.
Will that work for you, these publications? Here, soon.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any announcements?
I'm just wondering, do we have our plan in mind for Project Curb?
We do.
Of what we're doing and where we're going and.
So we're getting, Lisa and I, Lisa from UWL, we are redoing all the numbers at all the different locations to find out where, she went to schools and to look at the programs and the projects and how many people we really do need, and we're revising those numbers this week, and we are, us as a group are on call where we're short. So like the couple of days before, because people are still consistently signing up right now, and it's in all the schools, so we're getting a lot of more sign up. So the week of, we're just, I will definitely contact all of you, I'll send it up to Sheri, and then Sheri will forward it out to you of what school we're needed at.
Okay.
There are schools that are not getting as much help as others. Norris, which you so kindly brought, which I love it, thank you for bringing that up with the Curb Appeal. So Mrs. Schlecker is going to get about 50 students, but we already have 15 people at West, so we might distribute those students, so it's all kind of a playing game of kind of putting everybody where we need the help, where we don't have enough.
Okay.
So we are on the schedule, we just, as a group, we're going to go where we're needed, if that's okay.
Individually or fully?
No, us seven will go together, yeah.
as a group, we had a discussion about matching apparel and everything. So, is that something that we still want?
It's probably too late.
That's what I was thinking. I thought about that today. So...
Well, we could choose a color.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Or we could choose, there are seven of us. We could choose a different rainbow color.
That's true.
Should I have Sherry, Sherry check on the timeline on an embroidered shirt that could be potentially available? That, and if that could be done, that if you would be interested and she suddenly could just get sizes as requested, that would just match as a basic denim shirt or something. And maybe that would work in some ways.
That sounds good.
And you probably don't want to have anything other than denim. You don't want to have anything other than, you know, that would seem to make sense. And with Board of Education Apprendice Don or something like that.
Sure, yeah.
I have no guarantee, but we can check tomorrow and see what we can do with the rest of...
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Any other announcements? I do have two quick ones. I serve as, as your representative to the CISA VI Board of Control. We had a meeting last evening. I volunteered to go through the policies with them. They haven't been updated since 2002. There were representatives from Coconna and from Freedom. And Ted Nieske, the executive director out there and I, and the four of us, or three of us, went through those. So, those will be presented for Board of Control action probably in October. CISA VI is looking to establish some consensus across the CISA of having no school on President's Day in the 2018-19 school year. What they would do is bring in a variety of professional development opportunities so that it would be cost-effective for districts to send teachers to an event and they could bring in some really top-notch people in order to do that. CISA VI, as you may know, also hosts monthly legislative breakfasts to which administration and board members are invited. And I will, I just got those dates today. I'll send them out to you. And, and one of the, the good, one of the very good news items we heard yesterday is that one of the provisions in the state budget, which is still pending, is that low-spending districts like Oshkosh would be able to increase their expenditure per pupil by $100 to try to catch up to the state average over time. So, it wouldn't be a one-time only and it wouldn't be a large amount, but it would be an amount that would allow us to, to make some headway. The other thing...
And we should comment in fact that because of where we're at, we won't qualify for the full 100 this time around. So, but we benefit this by about $400,000. So, that's good news.
And then the Wisconsin Association of School Boards has some upcoming professional development meetings for administration as well as board members. The first is a regional meeting on Tuesday, September 26th, at which Mr. Evans will be receiving an award. So, if you haven't signed up, you may want to do that. And then there's a legislative advocacy conference set up for November 4th. I believe that's a Saturday. And one of the big items there has to do with school funding, current trends, current direction, board advocacy 101. If you haven't gotten one of these and you need one, let me know. So, those are some upcoming things by which we can continue to show our advocacy for lifelong learning.
I do too.
All right.
How are you doing there, Jim?
I think you'll have a nice delegation there next week.
All right.
I do have one announcement as well.
Please.
Yes. Right behind me, thanks to the work of, of Dr. Andy Jones. He has worked with a vendor and getting a wonderful deal to put the district's identity behind us on the board wall that we feel is, is really a much nicer identification for us. And it is a vendor that has worked with, I believe, both Trager and Tipler and, and is a local vendor that provides a nice background in taking our, our logo and making sure we're well-identified. So, thanks to Dr. Jones.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Any other announcements? All right, then at this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Under 1980.851E Wisconsin statutes, A, discuss superintendent's salary and benefits for candidate search.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Carlin?
Yes.
Herzog?
Yes.
Herzog, aye. Olmsted?
Aye.
Olmsted, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Heschel, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Motion, Harry.
Needing adjourned. Thank you very much.